Good morning and welcome to the August 16th, 2022 meeting of the City of Lakeland Planning and Zoning Board. The Board meets every third Tuesday of the month to review proposals for changing the city's comprehensive plan, its future land use map, zoning changes consistent with the map, and conditional use permits. The Board is made up of seven members appointed by the City Commission and is assisted by the staff of the Community and Economic Development Department and the City Attorney's Office. Staff will advance any presentation slides that should have been provided prior to the meeting. The meeting is divided into two parts. The first part is a public hearing where we expect to hear new applicants explain their request and receive comments from affected parties. The second part of the meeting is termed the general meeting and primarily consists of acting on recommendations from staff about the cases that came up in the prior month's meeting. We invite everyone who wishes to participate to be heard. We do ask that you be concise in your comments and that speakers avoid being repetitive. That is, if several people have pointed out traffic concerns, there is no need to hear additional comments regarding traffic again, but we would like to hear anything new that has not been addressed. In order to allow everyone to have an opportunity to speak, there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker, and the clerk has a timer for this purpose. We respectfully ask that you adhere to this rule. We also ask at this time that you silence all mobile devices. Also, if you do come up to speak, please state your name and your address so we can have that for the record. I'll turn it over to Ronald Roberts.
Good morning. Major modification of an existing conditional use to adopt a new site development plan and allow a freestanding emergency room as part of planned medical office uses on property located at 2500 Kathleen Road. Owner Lakeland Regional Health Systems, Inc., applicant Shelton Rice Peterson and Myers, PA, and this is for consideration of final decision.
Good morning, for the record, I'm Philip Scares, Principal Planner with Community Economic Development. This is a 22.34 acre site located at 2500 Kathleen Road. It's at the corner of Kathleen and I-4. Show the location map here. It's at that southwest corner, or excuse me, that northwest corner of I-4 and Kathleen This is the existing zoning. It currently has a C2 zoning designation with conditional use permit. The conditional use permit was approved back in 2009 that currently allows 150,000 square feet of retail office and hotel uses. And there was also, there was also an administrative modification done in 2017 when the 7-Eleven was constructed here. So the 2017 modification included the 7-Eleven and some other conditions in the site plan that we show you today, but the site was purchased by Lakeland Regional Health and they have commenced construction of a 76,300 square foot medical office currently under construction right now, which that is already a permitted use in the C2. That wasn't a part of the, it wasn't a part of the conditional use permit. Those were actually just uses that were allowed in medical office. But, and the description said freestanding emergency room. That is true. Well, we are expanding the medical use is just a little more than a freestanding emergency room, and I'm going to turn it over to Shelton Rice with the applicants team here in a few minutes. I'll just let you know that this is going to be approved for hospital, freestanding emergency room, group homes and nursing homes as well. So what they, what the request is to increase the overall square footage that allowed by the conditional use permit of 150,000 to 300,000 square feet of medical, of medical-related uses on this site. And with that, we are updating the master plan of the site. So right now, I'm just going to go show you a couple of slides. Again, we're at the northwest corner of I-4 and Kathleen Road. This is Mall Hill Road here, and this is the Mall Hill Road extension. We'll talk about that in a few minutes. This is looking southwest into the site. This is like standing on, looking back southwest into Kathleen, and this is the site back This is just looking on Kathleen Road, again, just looking southwest. It's kind of hard to take a picture of the site because it's really, it's all wooded right now. Again, there's, like I said, there's some construction. And this is northeast looking back off the exit ramp on I-4. No, I did not take this picture. This is a Google Earth view, but, and you can just, you can tell that, you know, the grade change on this site is very extreme from I-4, you know, to the, to the center, you know, to the, to I-4 back up, you know, to the site. It's a very high site. This is the existing site plan that is approved today. And again, this conditional use permit is updating their master plan to allow the medical uses. And this, this plan is more based around an anchor use with, you know, without parcels. So they, the conditions, when we, when we go through the conditions here in a little bit after Mr. Rice's presentation, we'll show you that, you know, this was, everything kind of was tied to this original site plan. So we're going to be updating conditions based on what their, their existing site plan that they're proposing, and this is their proposed site plan that, that we'll be updating too. And I apologize for the orientations. This is just the way that they, they came with, with engineer, but this is, this is a site here. This is Kathleen Road. This is the I-4 on-ramp here. Currently under construction is this portion here in blue, which is 76,300 square feet. And then you have parking, and then you have some auxiliary medical buildings here that could be used for freestanding emergency room, again, group homes, you know, hospital-type uses. And this would be the, I believe this is a freestanding emergency, but I'll let Shelton get into that. And then this is coming in off of Mall Hill Road. This will be your access here. There's a couple of things that will change on this site plan, this little portion here because you have the rail line here, and if Mall Hill Road is ever extended, best that we can't have this little, this little intersection here. So this will, it'll, everything will basically come through this center and then radiate out here. And then this little access point is just too close to Kathleen Road. We haven't had a revised site plan, but that, that'll change before this goes to City Commission. Those are just the major changes of the site plan. What you see here is going to be what they're, what they're planning to do. In order to accomplish this building, prior to applying for this major modification of the conditional use, when they were in this process for getting the site plan approved, there was a variance done back in 2009 that, that addressed the change of the heights of the structure. So the maximum height is going from 36 feet to 60 feet, and then a hotel can be 65 feet. There was also some, because this is a long frontage here along Kathleen, they couldn't meet their frontage build-out, so there was a variance for their frontage build-out plus the setback variance. And those will be, those are reflected in the conditions. We note the variance within, in the conditions when we, and after Shelton's presentation, I'll go through the conditions. But anyway, I'm going to leave it here, and then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rice for his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Scares. For the record, Shelton Rice, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Peterson and Myers, address 225 East Lemon Street, Lakeland, Florida. Today, I'm here on behalf of Lakeland Regional Health Systems. We have with us a couple of folks in attendance, but before I get into that, I'd like to take a moment to commend staff. We always enjoy working with them. We appreciate their effort and diligence to move this project forward quickly. So thank you, Mr. Scares, and your team. Our development team, so we have on behalf of Lakeland Regional Health Systems, Mr. Michael Spake and Patrick Phillips here, representing the hospital system. Pure Project Management, we have Brian Jones. Additionally, part of this development team and our engineering record is Chastain Skilman, specifically Mr. Lenny Arnold, as well as the Lunds Group, our architect. And they're certainly the ones to thank for some of the pretty pictures that we'll be able to show in, in a few minutes. And then our firm, Peterson and Myers, is the land use lawyers. So looking at the location map, this is Interstate 4 and Kathleen Road. Mr. Scares went over this, so I'll be brief. There is, you look on the site here, this is 7-Eleven. This exists today, and you can see this is a lighted intersection, signalized intersection with Mall Hill Road, and then you have access points here. It's already constructed adjacent to the 7-Eleven on the east side, and then as well with the signal on the west side. So a little bit of summary about the property. It's a little over 20 acres. Ultimately, this conditional use permit contemplated the 7-Eleven site as well, but really what we're talking about here is the 20.6 acres that's undeveloped. Future land use designation of interchange activity center, zoning of highway commercial or C2, the suburban corridor context district, and it's also in the urban development area. So I'm going to summarize our request just briefly. Ultimately, what we'd like to do is we'd like to provide for alternative and additional medical-type uses on this property related to Lakeland Regional's ownership. What they see as being the needs in the community, and I'll have Mr. Phillips get up and speak briefly on behalf of Lakeland Regional as far as their intent. In order to accomplish that, because there is an existing conditional use permit on the site, we're proposing to amend the list of permitted uses that are allowed to provide for more of these medical-type uses, being the group homes, being the nursing homes, being the emergency room and hospital-type uses in the, as are defined in the Land Development Code, proposing to increase the maximum gross floor area for the site from 150,000 square feet. We're saying 300,000 square feet. It's really a touch over that. It's around 303,000 square feet when we account for the existing 7-Eleven building. It's already there, so we're really contemplating 300,000 square feet of new or newer construction. But that would be inclusive of the 77,000 plus or minus square foot medical office building that's under construction now. Also, we would replace the site development plan as Mr. Scares identified, as well as modify the conditions of approval so that they're consistent with this new proposed use. So I'm going to give a little bit of history here. Ordinance number 5129 ultimately was approved in 2009. At that time, they needed to get this conditional use approval to allow for the development of anything in excess of 40,000 square feet of retail space. So that necessitated the conditional use application and ultimately the approval. It allowed 150,000 square feet of commercial and retail. At that time, they really didn't know what the intended use of the site would be, other than they wanted to paint with a relatively broad brush so that they had opportunities and, as they may present themselves, they could modify ultimately where they go without having to come back and modify the conditional use permit. In the staff report, which staff was kind enough to provide to us as of yesterday, the city recognized the area as a gateway to the city, and that's consistent with some language we'll see in the interchange activity center, future land use designation. So with a high-profile site that's along pretty significant roadways at Kathleen Road and Interstate 4, this is something that people that aren't from our community will see, and we want it to be a good reflection of the city. So based on those things, there are some conditions in the CUP approval that exist today related to eliminating certain C2 uses that wouldn't be appropriate for that high-profile site, as well as enhanced landscaping and architectural requirements for the project. So fast forward to 2017, and Mr. Scares touched on this as well. There was an administrative modification or change made to ordinance number 5147 incorporating the suburban corridor sub-district regulations. Ultimately, that was to allow the 7-Eleven to be constructed and to provide some structure and requirement for building heights and things related to the gas station use. While those were undergoing, staff and the applicant agreed to modify the conditions to update some of the references just as things changed from 2009 to 2017. The conditions that were previously provided for related to design standards, landscaping, signage, lighting, while the references changed, they largely remain the same and remained in place, recognizing this gateway aspect of the property. So fast forward to May of 2021, Lakeland Regional acquires the property. When they acquired the property, they didn't know specifically what they wanted to do on the site as far as all of the different ultimate development of all of the out parcels. Some of that's still a little bit in question, but they've further refined where they want to go with this. And based on that, we applied for a variance in July of 2021. That variance was approved, and that 2021 variance provided for an increase in the maximum building height and some relaxation of the requirements under the suburban corridor context district, which were put in place in 2017 when they updated the ordinance. So all of that to say, that ultimately allowed, under the existing conditional use permit, the construction of this first phase of the medical office building, which was 76,000 to 77,000 square feet. So that's under construction. If you've driven out this direction recently, you've likely seen all the construction occurring on this site, the earth moving, the clearing, landscaping that's going in, and all of those things. So Phase 1 is underway. What we're asking to do is ultimately provide for additional medical uses that are more aligned with how Lakeland Regional anticipates developing this site to meet the needs of this surrounding area. So having said that, to speak a little bit more about Lakeland Regional's vision and thoughts on this property, I'm going to ask Mr. Phillips to come up and speak with you and share with you a few of the slides.
Patrick Phillips, I'm with Lakeland Regional Health, Chief Strategy Officer and Senior Vice President of Business Development. Address is 1324 Lakeland Hills Boulevard, Lakeland, Florida, 33805. And so, you know, I get to talk about the fun stuff, about what, what's the intent here? What's the vision? What are the design principles that we came up with? Why are we looking to continue development and expand our opportunities into the future? For us as an organization, the first thing is making sure that we have good flexibility in that design. You know, the medical center is 864 beds, and it's going to expand even more when the Behavior Health Hospital opens, and so we want to have ambulatory access. And what's happening today isn't what happened a couple of years back, isn't what happened 10 years back, and what's going to be needed to be developed into the future is certainly going to evolve and is unpredictable. And so our intent for several different requests today is to have some flexibility in that future campus development. We know it's 20, 20.6 acres, and it'll take years to be able to fully develop it out. We know we want to make an impact to the community and inpatient care, and so with this first medical, you know, first development that we're doing, the 76,000 square feet, it's around expanding both primary care, family medicine access, and specialty care. And the immediate request is around better access to emergency care services. We were in the paper recently for one of the highest, busiest emergency departments in the country. We often rank first or second, and so we know we've got to bring those, those services closer to home for the north side of the town. And then presence along I-4, and so, you know, there's a lot of folks that travel east and west on I-4, and they don't realize how great of medical services we have in our, in our community, and realize we have this only level-two trauma center, you know, in a three-county region, and all the complex care that's delivered there. And so we want to bring our services out to, you know, a prominent area where we can be able to gather more awareness around the services that are able to be afforded here locally. And then the last, you've heard Danielle, our CEO, speak on this before probably, but our graduate medical education, we are well on our journey to become a full graduate medical education program, starting in the summer of 2023 over a five-year period. And so the first floor of this site will be the family medicine graduate medical education site, and we're really excited to continue to grow our GME program, but we think that will lead to more and more providers being retained local and, and that we can continue to improve this, this gap that we have and, you know, not enough physicians in our community that a lot of communities are experiencing. So if you take a look at this, and this is from I-4, looking, looking at the property, looking down at the property on the, I guess if you're looking on the left side, that's our three-story medical office building. The first floor, again, is the family medicine. The second floor is specialty space. The third floor is shelved space that will be developed in some due time. And then on the right side is where we would plan to put the freestanding emergency department and then develop the rest of the, rest of the campus as it fits the needs of the community. And then this is if you're coming into the campus, the main entryway. You'll see the reverse, the medical office building, three-story on the right, where there's easy entry into a nice lobby that has access to the family medicine, and then stairs up to the second floor for the specialty space. And then just one more rendering to show to you all, and this is if you're traveling from Kathleen Road going back into town. You know, this is, this is why we see if we're able to capture more of the north community and market here, that keeps those patients, keeps those patients off of the downtown roads and lessens the impact there, and we're able to, to keep care local within their community is the idea. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips, and our team will be here to answer questions as you may. We'll, we'll try to wrap this up quickly. Proposed master plan, and I call it a master plan, I'm going to have to adjust the height of that. Mr. Phillips is a little taller than I am. Proposed master plan, so just a couple of things to identify here. Kathleen Road on this side of the page, Interstate 4 here, and then we're bound by the CSX Railroad on this boundary. So this is the 7-Eleven site, and so you can see the access points contemplated here and here. And we fast forward, this is the medical office building, so Phase 1, the initial 76,000 to 77,000 square feet is under construction. This is the freestanding emergency department and urgent care center. This is where we're proposing a potential second-phase medical office building to be constructed down the road. And then future development, so these are some out parcels that, that specific and actual use isn't fully vetted at this time. We recognize we needed to amend the conceptual, excuse me, the conditional use permit in order to allow the freestanding emergency department. It may ultimately mean we have to come back and modify something else again whenever we fully vet that, but right now, we're identifying that for future development, and it would have to be developed consistent with the permitted uses that are allowed under the CUP in order to be developed without having to come back before the Planning and Zoning Board and ultimately the City Commission. So this is a conceptual build-out that's put together by the Lunds Group. This is looking kind of north, northwest Kathleen Road on the right side of the screen. This is the urgent care center, urgent care expansion, potentially the three-story medical office building that's under construction today. Once again, another future medical office building, and then some more space that could be developed here. We're going to talk about traffic in just a moment. Some of these transportation routes and internal roads have been tweaked and modified based on feedback we've received from the city, and so I'll, I'll get into that momentarily, but just to give you a sense of how this campus may lay out. Before we get to that, a little bit just on the land use and zoning, looking at really what is the intent of this land use and peeling it back from the specific uses to, conceptually, from a planning standpoint, are we looking at for these interchange activity centers and the C2 zoning? So interchange activity centers, coordinated development area, which due to proximity to an interstate can achieve a high intensity of development activity. So I pulled these provisions out of the comprehensive plan, speaking to the intent and characteristics of IACs, encourages high-intensity centers which function well, provide aesthetically attractive gateways to the community. And so here's another point where we've heard a gateway to the community. Looking at the renderings that have been provided and that the Lunds Group put together, certainly, you know, this is something that would be attractive and would well represent the city. Another point I just want to mention, because we are talking about increasing the square footage that would be allowed on the site, the IAC allows up to a 2.0 floor area ratio in the urban development area according to the Land Development Code. Now, the CUP already has some limitations on square footage that could be developed on the site. We're asking to increase that, but had a CUP not existed on the site, this site could potentially be developed with up to 1.8 million square feet. So while we're asking for a significant increase in doubling, or maybe slightly above doubling the square footage, we're not asking for something that's approaching even the cap that would be contemplated under this land use. Highway Commercial District for zoning, so the C2 zoning district to provide for a broad range of office and retail uses primarily oriented toward the motoring public. Additional statement in the Land Development Code is that the C2 district is intended for locations along our interior, excuse me, arterial and collector streets, and is not intended for shopping centers or large retail establishments other than as out parcels. And so I think what I'm trying to identify here is this medical complex, this medical office use is arguably more consistent with the C2 zoning district than would be the prior retail commercial development that exists today. So a little bit on the traffic circulation, this is an aerial showing Mall Hill Drive Road, Kathleen Road, and I-4, so overlaid. Now, this is not done by the Lunds Group, so you'll see it's not near as pretty, but access points to the site, Kathleen Road, have two access points. This green area that's identified now, that exists today, that has been constructed, and it goes behind 7-Eleven. And then the orange area is really what's contemplated. So previously, we'd contemplated access going here as well, adjacent to the CSX Railroad, as well as a connection point here, but as Mr. Scares identified, we received information from staff in the last week or so that they had concerns about some of that access, so we'll be modifying the site development plan to reflect that. But the orange area will really be the internal access, and that'll show how the, the site would likely function as far as traffic ingress and egress with the main spine road going here. A couple of other things, because this project is phased and it's already had some of the project approved and in construction, there's already been a traffic study done, and so they've identified some of the necessary improvements to, that will have to be done to accommodate this traffic. Some of that would be required in the background, some of that ultimately would be required from this project. With that being said, I won't get into the details because that's still going to be worked through in the concurrency, and there are conditions related to some of those traffic The last thing I would mention as far as a potential tweak to the site development plan that we're still vetting, when we remove this access point, this building may ultimately have to be reoriented and shifted, but that's tentatively the plan. It will either be oriented that direction or maybe 90 degrees facing Kathleen Road. that direction or maybe ninety degrees facing Kathleen Road. Just another rendering showing the spine road, if you're looking back towards the medical office buildings being constructed. And that brings us to our summary. So our request is to modify the existing conditional use approval to allow of ride and medical uses. Some instances, we know exactly what we want to put and exactly where we want to put them. Some of them are in construction. Other ones, we know we need some additional space. It makes sense to have a larger complex. We don't know that ultimate use. And so that's why we've identified those areas for future development. LRHS and the development team, these are local companies in large part, have a good reputation in the community and will continue to work with the city and city staff to make sure that this project is something the city can be proud of. This request is consistent with the policies of the city's comprehensive plan and the land development code. Having said that, we're here. We'll stand for any questions. If there are any comments from the public, I would request just a moment or two to respond and rebut to those. Having said that, we have our team. We'll be glad to answer questions. We respectfully request a favorable vote. Thank you.
Any questions?
I need to disclose, I need to recuse on this project. I am the landscape architect on phase one.
Okay. All right. Any comments or questions from anybody?
Just reminder on that, that we do have the forms for that. So you can take care of that today.
No questions?
I got a couple of questions.
The increased allowable intensity that you're asking for would apply to any future development that are within those C two uses. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Not just the additional medical?
Correct. So there's an existing seven eleven that's arguably within this conditional use permit. It is within it. So that's three thousand one hundred and fifty square feet. There's three hundred thousand square feet that we're kind of asking for. Already a hundred and fifty thousand allowed on the site. So we're asking for a total of three hundred thousand being more of this medical type use on this CUP permit. So that's-
But the ask is for basically whatever's entitled to it. You're anticipating?
Yes, sir. It's, we're asking for what we're anticipating coming forward. We're actually asking for quite a bit less than the future land use would allow, as I mentioned. But yes, sir.
The original traffic study, the TIS, you said, and they didn't want to get into a whole lot of specifics about it. But was that just for the original development?
Yes, sir. So there was a traffic study that was done. There's one done way back, I believe in two thousand nine or two thousand twelve. Ultimately, that created some conditions and there were some obligations that came out of that. Fast forward, there was a traffic study that was recently done when they brought forward the medical office building and went through concurrency for that site. That traffic study has subsequently been updated. I do not know if staffs had an opportunity to review it yet.
We, we did receive that Wednesday afternoon. And so it's a total, in terms of what the study analyzed was three hundred fifteen thousand square feet of medical office and related uses. And so the total trip generation under that program daily is eleven thousand three hundred and forty. AM peak trip generation is nine seventy-seven. And then the PMP trip generation is twelve thirty-eight. So it's definitely going to be a major trip generator. And so out of this traffic study, one of the key recommendations was the need for dual northbound left turn lanes on Kathleen and Mall Hill. And then really then in essence, the reconstruction of Mall Hill extension west of that point to allow for two inbound lanes coming off of Kathleen and adjustments to turn lanes heading, heading towards Kathleen Road. When we looked at it as staff, one of the concerns we had, this is some recent data that we received, is that we were actually starting to see a spike in crashes at this intersection. Over the past three years, we've had a fatal pedestrian crash, five angle collisions and two left turn collisions. And so the way the conditions that, that Mr. Scares will be getting into are really trying to kind of keep the, the recommendations in the background, but ultimately lead ourselves towards what is called an interchange control evaluation. Figure out the exactly the safest type of design and configuration that we should be pursuing Kathleen and Mall Hill. Keeping in mind, this is a major trip generator and that as the project continues to move forward, there are going to be certain thresholds at which the, the ICE analysis will be required and then implementation of those, of those, of those measures. But, you know, certainly one of the other key issues too is, is that we've got kind of the emerging transit system in this part of town. We've got two routes that are, that are called the blue line one, blue line two, that have very various connections north and south of the site. So one of the things we wanted to do too, and this was something that was a carryover from the, the two thousand nine conditional use, is make sure that we have the, the appropriate transit service to this major medical facility to serve folks in North Lakeland as well as Central Lakeland south of the interstate. So those will be some of the themes that you'll see in, in Phillips' conditions going forward. But it's really based on the sizable trip generation that we're looking at through built out of the development.
Commissioner Locke, if I may add to that. So we received the conditions last week. This is still a little bit of a fluid process. We're evaluating those. We haven't had an opportunity to go through all of them. I'm sure you've looked at them, your staff, what's seven pages or so of changes to the, or ultimately of the conditions. So we'll continue to look at that. We'll work with city staff to get on the same page before we present this to the city commission.
And then from the original site to where you are now, it looks like you're shifting your pond further northward. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. So the stormwater pond, and Mr. Scares may be able to identify it. But yes, it's, it's contemplated to be right there. There's also another pond kind of on the southwest, well, let's call it the southern side there. And we'll have to go through, we've already gone through the permitting process for the existing or the newly constructed medical office building that's being built. We'll have to continue to evaluate those permits and update those permits, provide adequate stormwater and drainage for the impervious surface as it's added.
Is the intent to build the pond that's shown right there today and then when future development comes, shift the pond? Or what's the intent there?
I believe, I don't believe the intent, and I, I don't want to speculate too much. But I believe the stormwater pond that's on the southern side of the site may be being constructed sooner than later. The one farther on the northern side may come at a later date. But I, I don't know the details that I don't want to get too far out in front of my skis here.
No questions? I have two minor questions. The, I assume that any future building that you're going to do, no matter what the project is, you still have to fall in line underneath certain requirements, height requirements, front requirements that the city has at the time, or negotiate something?
Yes, sir. So those requirements are identified in the code. We're subject to some provisions in the code as are identified in, in the proposed conditions and the conditional use that has existed, that many of those conditions will remain, as well as being as this suburban corridor context district, if it's not specifically identified in the CUP, will have to meet the minimum requirements and maximum requirements identified in the land development code.
One other question, just out of curiosity, we've had people, several folks come before us. When you're talking about a group home, what is your concept, what are you, what is your concept of group home? We've had various, as I say, various-
Yes, sir. So I, I can allow Mr. Phillips to speak to that. But I think the intent is to provide some flexibility to allow an assisted living facility or something in that nature on the site. And they, once again, trying to paint with a little bit of a broader brush for the things that are not contemplated for immediate development. So really being the medical office buildings, they know they want to have those. They know they want the freestanding emergency department for the other future development and trying to, to paint a little broader.
Yeah, I'll just add for us, you know, start off as a hospital, add a physician group. We've developed joint ventures into the post-acute world and certainly expect into the future, you know, the care continuum, taking care of all parts of the patient. We'll continue for health systems. And so we just want to have some flexibility to continue to support those post-acute services into the future to meet the patient needs.
Any other questions?
Is there an existing or proposed medical complex comparable, comparable to this in existence to your knowledge?
I don't, I, I know, and I, I may not answer your question as directly as you want, Commissioner Roberts. And we could certainly get the hospital folks to get up in the, or, excuse me, the health system folks to get up. They may be able to respond more appropriately. I want to attack that a little bit differently. So there's been some recent changes in Florida statutes that have modified the requirements for healthcare facilities to be constructed. And so that gets back to certificates of need and whether or not there's justification for a new medical facility to be built in an area. And, and that gets, that gets into the regulation side of it. But that certificate of need has been removed by the state government. And so as that requirement's removed, you're seeing a broader range and more innovation in the types of medical facilities that are proposed and they're being constructed today. This is a little bit of that. So we're proposing a complex, which there are other complexes throughout the city. But this is a complex that really has this freestanding emergency department, which is a little bit of a newer innovation adjacent to the medical office building. So it may not be exactly the same. There are other medical complexes around.
You want to add anything to that?
I think just this immediate phase one is very comparable to grasslands. We call this grasslands two point O, but, but with more land. So that's a, that's immediate one, I think is a good comparison. I think when you look regionally, there's several health systems that are working through these same sorts of concepts, heavily ambulatory focused, bringing, bringing care closer to home.
One question I have is whether or not you would see a potential hospital on this, on this campus or anything where there would be overnight stays or more of a kind of traditional hospital product on this, on this site?
So what's contemplated right now is really the freestanding emergency department. They have a hospital for more of the hospital related uses in pretty close proximity. You have the, the main hospital facility is five or six minutes down the road. Ultimately, what they may do and how that may develop, that could change, right? This is still somewhat fluid. But that's not the intent in the immediate future.
Any comments or questions from the audience? Thank you.
All right. Now the fun stuff. Again, to the, to the new degree of conditions here and bear with me while I go back and forth between my notes and the, and the slides. There's a, there's a, there's a mini conditions here. And what we'll do is I'll try to, we'll, we'll go through them and I'll, and I'll highlight, you know, the major changes. So, so the, so we're updating the, the language to, from a hundred and fifty thousand square feet to a little over three hundred thousand square feet. I'll get with Shelton and adjust that number with the seven eleven if necessary. We, but we were just contemplating the three hundred thousand square feet. But if that number changes before we go to the city commission, like Mr. Rice said, that, you know, maybe three hundred and three thousand, but we'll, we'll change that. And we also getting to the, the list of permitted uses. You can see before the, this was contemplated as a, you know, as a, as a, as an anchor type of development with, with out parcels. So those references to the out parcels or outlots in, in this case, those have been deleted and we're adding new language here. Commercial uses shall include, we're including the hospital freestanding emergency room, group homes and nursing homes. There's a list of prohibited uses from the original two thousand nine conditional use permit, which you see listed here. Those will remain intact. There's nothing changing with those To see development regulations revised to recognize the, the variance that was approved back in twenty twenty-one, variance two thousand one zero one nine, which included setbacks, frontage buildout and building heights. So we're reflecting the language to change that. Also reflecting the language to recognize that sixty feet in building height. As far as the other conditions, the two D through two G design landscaping signage and lighting, all those conditions remain unchanged. So there. And then HI one, we've, we've updated some of the conditions and pretty much we're just updating it, this condition here to take out the, the references to the outlots. For, and we've also revised the condition, it should be underlined here, but before there was a condition that required every twenty spaces to have a landscape island. Our code, the land development code is actually every ten spaces. So that's been updated. The twenty should be struck out right there and the ten should be underlined. Make that change. And the concurrency management section of the conditions, previously when we looked at the, the two thousand nine conditional use permit, there were development thresholds related to the square footage. And those were broken down into phases. So these have been updated and reflected based on the revised transportation analysis for, for the existing construction that's going on right now and maybe further revised based on the traffic analysis that we've, that we're reviewing now before this goes to the city commission. But we have maintained those, those thresholds within the, within this condition. So you see phase one A is everything up to seventy-seven thousand square feet, which they're going up to right now. And you also have phase one B. And again, these are, these were existing thresholds from seventy-seven thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. And then this condition, new condition says prior to the mid, to submit all the, prior to the site plan, submit all for a cumulative seventy thousand, seventy-seven thousand square feet in medical nursing home and related uses. And interstate control evaluation or other acceptable analysis shall be submitted to determine the appropriate intersection configuration designed to accommodate development traffic through buildout and adherence to the city's vision zero goal. The recommendations resulting from this analysis shall be approved by Polk County. So you can see we have a lot of coordination here with the county and also FDOT. Further refining the conditions, we're just taking out some conditions that are reflected from the previous analysis and previous conditions from two thousand nine. Prior to the first certificate of occupancy, the required intersection mitigation measures for Kathleen and Mall Hill Road shall be, shall be conducted. And then we also have the blue line one and two, another transit operated by Lakeland Area Mass Transit with equal or greater frequencies shall be available to north and south developments, site on Kathleen Road and east of the site on Mall Hill Road. Again, we're just revising those conditions to reflect today's conditions and today's land development code standards. Access and circulation. Again, some of the minor changes here. We're looking at the requirements for turn lanes and, and the links. And, you know, those have been adjusted based on revised traffic analysis. And internal pedestrian pathway network shall be provided that connects the public sidewalk to Kathleen Road and principal buildings on the development site. Again, that's an existing land development code requirement. Bicycle parking, things like that, those have changed, those remain the same. One condition we're adding, and this has come straight out of our land development code, but, you know, medical uses and, and these things require parking, sometimes beyond parking above what we require in the land development code. So we have parking alternatives. So, because we have, our code is based on maximum because we don't want to see too much parking on a single, on a, on a particular site. But when they do need that, they have to address with certain design mitigation such as providing, you know, additional landscaping, things like that. Well, we've gone a little bit step further. We've, and we've added the use of electric vehicle charging stations within one of those incentives or design alternatives, you know, such as bioswales and the creation of site, onsite amenities, green space and open areas when they're providing for that additional parking on the site. So in, in order to get them encouraged to do some EB parking, charging stations, which I think I would hope a use like this or would think they would have, have that planned. But if they, they don't, or if they, you know, need some little extra incentive, go beyond that, we, you know, we do allow electric vehicle charging stations to be one of those incentives to, as an alternative when you're providing more parking than, than what's required. And lastly, the transit and transit demand conditions have been updated and reflected based on our current land development code standards. And Chuck had talked about those previously, you know, we're trying to get more coordination with Lakeland Area Mass Transit, provide for transit shelters and those things. There were some language in the, in the conditions that were somewhat outdated. So we just, just updated and streamlined that with the transportation demand management measures or transit demand measures shall be implemented in compliance with section ten point four point two of the land development code. And just- with Section 10.4.2 of the land development code, and just trying to eliminate some of this old language out of there and just keep it to today's standard that we have in the land development code. Those are the conditions that we have. Again, staff does recommend approval. Again, this is, this is public hearing and recommendation, so our recommendation is that it is consistent with the IAC. It is consistent with the existing C2 zoning with these conditions. We do recommend approval, and we'll forward this to the City Commission based on your recommendation.
Any other questions?
Two questions. First is a process question. Talks about some modifications that may come after our approval plan for the over 300,000 and perhaps some of the traffic stuff. Would changes based on our approval after the fact need to come back through us? What's the threshold?
Not if they're built into the conditions of the conditional use, but I think that question would be more appropriate for staff as part, you know, we're essentially the board, or the City Commission would be delegating that, those approvals to the staff. So how would they handle that?
And that's where, like with the transportation conditions, and I think, you know, as Mr. Simpson said, the way it's written right now, we've got flexibility built in there to make sure that the actual final design and configuration addresses the safety issues we have at the location, the operational issues, as well as county approval. So as long as those conditions don't change, I'm comfortable with being able to handle that. You know, if there's a tweak to some other things, you know, related to other types of transportation or circulation conditions, you know, I think the onsite access is something that, you know, we're going to need to make a modification to the exempt before it goes to the commission anyway. But in terms of the offsite conditions, as long as we don't have changes to those, I'm comfortable, you know, that we can roll right straightforward to the City Commission. Some of the conditions where there have been some changes shown here, it's really because, you know, the turn lane, the southbound right turn lane to the southern driveway exists today, so I just modified it to reflect the current configuration. Transit shelter exists today. Mall Hill exists today west of Kathleen Road. And so some of that already exists. But I guess it would just be a question of, as long as we're not changing the offsite transportation conditions, and we're not changing the palette of uses that are allowed or square footages beyond the convenience store, which I think could be built into a recommendation from the planning and zoning board, I'm comfortable that we can make some minor tweaks before City Commission. But I know the commission certainly does not like seeing changes between the planning and zoning board and when they get asked to make an approval, and I completely understand that.
And I guess my question, we've got 300,000 here. It sounds like it might be 305 or whatever. Do we just want to change that here so that there isn't a markup?
Absolutely.
So my understanding has been, five, six, seven years down the road, might be totally different folks out here, totally different folks here. But if somebody comes up with some absurd, what we consider to be an absurd project, we still have that control to stop it.
Provided that it's outside of what's being approved here.
Right, right.
Exactly. I mean, and that's been one of the challenges with the current conditional uses, is that there's a whole history on this location that goes back and led up to the conditional use for, you know, that was adopted in 2009. And so a lot of the conditions that made a lot of sense then based on a retail product and development program made no sense with this plan. And so there was a lot of, you know, that's why there was so much strike through and underline, but you've, you know, hit on a very key point here is that this is going to continue forward through the buildout of the development program, and if it takes five years or if it takes 15 years, we need to make sure that it's easy for folks, either at staff level or at the board level, to kind of understand where things stand, and that those adjustments that may be requested in the future, they can, you know, take appropriate action on it. So, yeah, we want to make sure we're clear on that, and I think it's key, you know, in today's conversation, that, you know, there's that existing convenience store that's, I think it's around 3,000 or 4,000 square feet, and that, you know, we make sure that we can account for that in the P&amp;D recommendation, and maybe just structure it, say, 300,000 square feet of medical uses, or, you know, anything beyond the convenience store that we define that 300,000 as being beyond the existing convenience store, and then we can, you know, that's a good baseline for which to work.
And my second question was somewhat tied to this somewhat, not, it looks like we're making a lot of updates to match current standard. Has there been a thought about not restating current code and conditions and just applying the code at the time, or is there a force of establishing some of those current day processes in those conditions?
And that's been, you know, towards every jurisdiction, this land development code is different, and one of the things that we've run into over the years is particularly when it comes to, and I'll just call it our transportation demand management requirements that have been in place for about 10 years now, is that a lot of folks kind of skip past those in the land development code, and, you know, when they're reviewing it for a site plan. And so it's just personal preference on my part, it's just restating that you have to at least comply with those provisions of the code without getting too specific, which is why, like the commuter services requirements, a lot of that program has changed with the way how DOT operates it, and so it's really not appropriate to state it in that language today. But just kind of saying, just look at our code, if you comply with that section in Article 10, then you're good.
If we're stating, you know, like the landscape, every 20 spaces, if we keep that maybe 10 years, it's sort of a conflict between code and what was in the conditions, and now which supersedes, right? So I guess that was my general question, really doesn't apply here, but just.
Yeah, and I think Chuck's point is, given the age of this conditional use, the amount of time that it's passed, there have been a lot of changes to the code, things have been brought forward. So generally, whenever we have a major modification, we have, operate, revisit that, we like to update things to reflect the current standard there, just to make things easier. But yet, I mean, otherwise, that's a good question, so.
And if there's a conflict between the two, and I'll look to Mr. Simpson, make sure I'm not playing lawyer, but we always look to make sure that whatever's in the conditional use or the planning of development, that those are the regulations that carry the day. And so I think that probably provides more certainty to the applicant to be able to say, you know, this is what we're going to kind of lock into as a commitment going forward, even if there are changes to the land development code in the future.
Right, yeah. I mean, that would be my concern, if you try to build in some condition that forces them to constantly update along with the code. I mean, they, once they build something out, they build it out to the current code of that time, and if they have to keep updating along with the code, that would be, that could potentially be pretty burdensome for someone, so.
Any other questions or any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I would just, I know that Mr. Rice had indicated they were still looking at the conditions, but Mr. Rice, is there anything that you want to say to the conditions before the board votes on it?
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. I'll be just perfectly honest with you guys. We received the conditions Friday afternoon, right? We, you know, we're here now Tuesday morning. We've worked diligently. We've started to review them. There's some things in there that we've never heard of before with some of these transit lines and other requirements. We got to get our arms wrapped around some of those obligations. I'm confident with staff, as we've worked with them over the years, we'll get on the same page as far as the exact language, the requirements, the tweaks, you know, those types of things. I've identified a few grammatical things that, you know, just for transparency, we might want to clean up, and ambiguities. I'm confident we can get on the same page with staff as far as those conditions. We would request a little bit of flexibility with those conditions, just to the extent that we can work with staff and get on the same page.
Well, let me ask you, sir. And do we delay making any decision on our part until you have that from the, from the, I suppose, test of the conditions that they haven't had an opportunity to review yet?
Well, I, I mean, it sounds like he is, I mean, you can clarify, Mr. Rice, if I'm speaking incorrectly, but it sounds like they're asking for the board to approve it, just with the caveat that they might request some changes in between now and when this goes in front of the commission. The board really can't control that. I mean, the board makes its recommendation, and after that, it's, changes are made sometimes, so that's just kind of an inevitable part of the process. So I don't think the board can really build in a recommendation that is, you know, subject to change. I think you either recommend what you recommend, and then it either gets adopted or modified or not, so.
And Mr. Simpson, just to add to that, thank you. For clarification, I think a recommendation from this board based on the conditions would be appropriate. I didn't want this board to look at it and say, well, there's proposed changes or tweaks that are going before the City Commission that are different than what we adopted. You know, we want everything to be transparent, so we want you to know there may be a few minor tweaks and changes. We're generally on the same page. We're agreeable to certainly a recommendation allowing this process to move forward, recognizing staff will, of course, advocate on behalf of the city, and we'll look to make sure that we create a project that's appropriate and that generally meets with the requirements that the conditions state today.
That being said, I hear a motion to accept the recommendation of the staff. Do we adopt?
Motion to approve as presented by staff?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you for it.
Item 2, review of minutes of the July meeting.
Does everyone have an opportunity to look at the minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes, or are there any changes that anyone has? Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
So move on.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Was it the second?
Yes, this is the second. Oh, I thought it was the second. Okay. Is there a second to accept the minutes?
Second.
Okay, there's a second. Thank you.
Item 3, change in land use from residential low to residential medium on approximately 25.92 acres. A change in land use from neighborhood activity center to residential medium on approximately 3.81 acres, and a major modification of planned unit development zoning for Town Park Estates, ordinance 4471, as amended to allow a three-story multifamily residential development with a maximum of 252 dwelling units on 29.73 acres located south of Town Park Boulevard and west of Yates Road. Owner, English Creek LLC, applicant Timothy Campbell. And there's a note, staff request an additional one-month continuance.
We don't have to have a motion on that, I assume.
No, we need to. I move to approve staff's request for a one-month continuance.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 4, major modification of planned unit development zoning to increase the maximum number of multifamily dwelling units allowed from 152 to 288. Increase the maximum allowable building height from two stories to three stories, and adopt a site plan for a new multifamily development project on 26.8 acres, generally located south of Poe Parkway, east of Harden Boulevard, and west of the Villas 3, 1020 Parkway Frontage Road South. Owner, G.G. Three Investments LLC, applicant Nick Everly, Hill Point LLC. Note, staff request an additional one-month continuance.
A motion to grant the staff's request for a continuance.
I move to grant the staff's request for an additional one-month continuance.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Item 5, large-scale land use amendment to allow a change in future land use from residential medium to residential low on approximately 19.02 acres, from residential medium to residential high on approximately 59.22 acres, and a major modification of planned unit development zoning to allow for the redevelopment of the former Wedgewood Golf Course from 1,148 multifamily dwelling units and 60 single-family detached dwelling units on 127.89 acres, generally located north of Interstate 4, south of Heather Point Drive, east and west of Carpenter's Way, and south of Wedgewood Estates Boulevard, 401 Carpenter's Way. Owner, SJD Development LLC, applicant Jonathan Hall, SJD Development LLC. Note, staff request an additional one-month continuance.
A motion to grant the staff's request.
Got a question on that one. First, this one's sort of rolled a couple of times. Do we anticipate it being one month, or is it?
We will definitely be coming back to the recommendation for the September meeting.
Yeah, at this point, we were pushing hard for August, but it's really with the, I guess, the traffic study and the complexity involved in the mitigation, that's kind of laying things here. But we're confident that we'll be able to come back with, you know, a recommendation next month for this one. They have made several major changes since you first saw the request back in May there, and we asked if they actually go back to the, to the community there and hold another neighborhood meeting to present that to the community. I believe they did that last week.
Yep.
Get their feedback there. So we've been working with them, and hopefully they'll have something that, you know, that will reach a sort of a middle ground.
Is it going to be large enough to go through the hearing process again, or we think we're going?
Yeah, we are going to hold another hearing. They did that's more multifamily, but they did also eliminate the substantial part of Project West of Carpenter's Way there, so you'll hear that next month.
Okay.
When they return.
Sorry.
Is there a motion to accept, to grant the request?
I move to grant the request for a one-month continuance.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 6, major modification of planned unit development zoning to increase the maximum building floor area from an existing, for an existing self-storage facility from 72,000 square feet to 99, 99, 536 square feet, and allow for a two-story expansion on property located at 5230 North State Road 33. Owner, Acorn Lakeland LLC, applicant Shelton Rice, Peterson and Myers, PA.
Good morning. Again, for the record, I'm Philip Scarish, Principal Planner with Community Economic Development. We brought you this case last month as a public hearing. We have our recommendation today, but we'll just, I'm going to briefly just do a little bit of history here, and a little refresher of the site location. So this is located on North Road 33, at the northeast corner of Lake Luther Road and State Road 33. There is existing self-storage facility, as we see here on the site. This is looking west back towards North Road, on North Road 33, just showing you a couple of slides of the area. This is their frontage along State Road 33. And I'm just going to park it right here on their proposed site plan. So the recommendation, again, that these buildings here are existing, but as you noticed in your staff report, this was built in somewhat of a quote-unquote fortress type of development, where you have a, you know, a circle around self-storage area, and then these, and then this is a one-story structure here. This area in yellow, and this little area there in orange, this is proposed to be their two-story addition of 49,036 square feet of additional space. And this increases their allowable maximum from 72,000 square feet of self-storage facilities to close to 100,000, which is 99,536. The property, again, is owned PUD. It has a business park, a future land use designation. The site is presently approved with a 50,500 square feet self-storage facility. This facility dates back to, started its process when it was in the county in 2004. It was proposed as a self-storage facility. Office was more of a mixed use with Office was more of a mixed use with, with a gymnasium type. This, this portion was brought to the city. However, the, the, the extreme eastern portion remains in the county and that was a, that's a two-building facility for a gymnastics studio. That remains in the county. But this was annexed in 2007. It's gone through some iterations of its approval over time, having a PUD modification, or PUD established in, in, in 2007 and again modified in 2016 to allow the, the existing development you see here today. In the staff reports, I just wanted to highlight a typo. I had mentioned that the, that building height was proposed as 24 and, 24 feet nine inches. That is perpetuated twice in my staff report. It's actually 25 feet nine inches, which, which we gave to you last month, but I just, just wanted to point out that typo in the staff report. There, uh, so this was the, the applicant did a sightline analysis. These are the, and they explained this last, during their last hearing. This is the, would be a single-family home. Just north of the site, there is an existing tree line that runs along that, that property on, along the north side. This is an existing building. It's a 12-foot in height and this is their proposed structure at 25 feet nine inches. As part of the conditions, what we're looking at when we evaluated this, you know, aesthetics, there really wasn't in way of opposition when we brought this to you last month and the applicant did have a, conduct a public meeting with, with the residents. And again, that stated last month, there was, there wasn't anybody objecting to the additional height. But there were some things that, that staff had noticed back when, when this was constructed. And I'll go back to the, the existing elevations. These elevations are not really meeting the intent and the spirit of, of what their existing conditions are today. So, we'd be working with the applicant to get, revising the conditions and, and so as, as a condition, if you're going to go above this, above this height, there's some, there's some additional treatments that we're, that required in land development code that would be needed along, along these portions that you can see from State Road 33. So, and those are reflected in the conditions which I'll go to here in a minute. But since the public hearing, again, we, again, at the public hearing, we didn't have anybody speak in opposition. And again, they, they had a public meeting back in July before the public hearing to go over the proposed changes with the, with the neighboring residents. Since then, there was only one person that called and objected to their request and that was based on more aesthetics. And at the time when this was modified in 2016, there was an access point here on State Road 33 that went into the site. There was a little heartburn with the residents on Lake Luther Road allowing this access point onto Lake Luther Road. I think that was one of the sticking points when that, when this went through the public hearing back in 2016. But we do believe this is a, a better design than having that access come off State Road 33. And, and the FDOT is doing a lot of things along State Road 33 with improvements, the, really the, the access really used to be Lake Luther. But the, the one comment that we did get was, you know, that same argument before was, why did you allow it on Lake Luther Road and, and, and its appearance as you see it off of State Road 33? So, again, that was just the, the one call that we had. Again, we just discussed the sightline analysis as they presented last month as well. Just going through the, the conditions, the maximum square footage is being increased from 72,000 to 99,536. The, it's replacing outdoor storage, so we're taking away the language that outdoor storage of boats and trailers. Everything remains intact. Setbacks, building setbacks, those, those are all remain intact. We're revising the language for the, the height to be 25 feet nine inches.
Philip.
Yes, sir.
Height, um, at 25 feet nine is measured from the bridge. Typically, we, we use the mean roof height. Is it really necessary to make that change here? I mean, it appears that, um...
Well, that was the, yeah, because this is that, that has a very low gable, Matt. This, this was just a, a maximum peak height of 25 nine inches, which is shown in there.
I mean, I'll just maybe clarify that that's measured from the bridge, not from the mean roof height.
Right, right.
And that we're going to go that route, so we're, we're not inadvertently allowing free even, even taller building.
Correct, yeah. Well, this is shown in, in the exhibits and that'll be, the sightline exhibit is being adopted as part of the, as part of the, the PUD modification. It'll be that peak height and I can change the language to say that the peak height, 25 nine inches, but that would be the only thing there. The rest of the conditions, they really remain changed, unchanged, you know, facility hours, the things that were done before. Changed a little bit of the language as far as the FDOT shall review and permit necessary and proposed site modifications that impact sites, State Road 33, if any, or we doubt we see any changes to, to that. But as FDOT makes their improvements along the road, if there need to be anything changed then, but I, I don't, I don't really foresee anything that the applicant would need to do. And, and like I mentioned before, we're revising conditions that anything that doesn't meet today's existing land development code standards as far as building materials and design, would need to meet those above that two-story expansion. So, so we talked about the elevation of the existing site, the, the building that's out there now, plus anything above, peeking out above that, they need to meet those, those standards for the land development code. So, that two-story structure, you know, up to 12 feet, you know, behind those walls will be, you know, have the same metal corrugated design as you see inside the thing. But above that, it would have to meet the land development codes, the design standards. So, and with that, with those conditions, staff does recommend approval and we stand for any questions.
Any questions at all?
If, if I remember correctly, Philip, you just mentioned that the new structure eliminates outdoor storage. If I remember correctly, outdoor storage would still exist on that site. Is that correct?
They would have U-Hauls. They have a U-Haul business there, so they're just, they're, that's part, that's the, but that's an accessory to their business.
And the height of this additional building is to be no higher actually than what the, was already approved for the area, for the U-Hauls and so forth.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
The height of, there's this new building that's going to be, that's going to be going up, the additional square footage. So, I understand they're going to put in a new building in that area.
Yes, sir. Yes, where they existed.
The height is going to be no greater than what already exists there, where it's already been approved.
The, the height will be, well, the height will be now 25 feet nine inches. They can, so the, the existing heights there now are 12 feet. So, you'll, you'll see an additional 12.
But it has to meet certain standards as far as...
Correct, yes.
...the size of it and so forth.
Yes.
Yeah, just to clarify, we will be eliminating the provision for the outdoor storage of boats, trailers, RVs, that would not apply to the U-Hauls, which is an accessory use where they just rent those. So, those are something they're not really storing per se, they're just renting and, you know, leasing for, for...
Coming and going.
Yes, thank you. And I understand this is not a public hearing, but appreciate the opportunity to just speak briefly. For the record, Shelton Rice, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Peterson and Myers, address 225 East Lemon Street, Lakeland, Florida. Today here on behalf of Acorn Lakeland, I have my clients with me, Mr. David Fanny Senior and Mr. David Fanny Junior. I hope I got that correct. But a couple of, a couple of just comments. Generally, we're, we are on the same page. And I say generally, I'll remove generally in just a moment, but we're on the same page with staff as far as the conditions. We've had the community meetings. Staff initially indicated to us that there was some resident opposition when this project originally came through. My clients weren't a process, a part of that process at that point. We've had the community meeting. We've had these things. We haven't heard anything directly to us. We provided contact information and letters to everybody within the notice distance to contact us separately from staff. We haven't received anything either. We didn't even receive the one call that, that apparently staff received. The only point for clarification I would add is on the maximum building height, particularly if we're going to define that, it's going to be identified as to the peak of the roof.
Yes.
Then I would ask that it be 26 feet. I know we're talking about inches here, but just because they put that exhibit together, I'd hate to get stuck where all of a sudden we can't do it at 25 nine, we're 25 11 and we have a problem. So, my clients have assured me if we had 26 feet, that would meet the, the, their expectations and they're confident they can get that built. But the 25 nine is just kind of what they expect. So, I, if, if that's something that staff's agreeable to...
That's acceptable, yes.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of conditions?
Motion to accept the recommendations as presented by staff with the modification of 25 foot nine inches throughout the request. Moving to 26.
Is there...
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Item seven. Green Swamp area of Critical State Concern Site Plan Approval for Gourmet Foods International Lakeland, Inc. to construct a 38,343 square foot industrial warehouse expansion on property located at 8,000 North Road 33. Owner, Gourmet Foods International Lakeland, Inc., applicant, J.S.K. Consulting.
Good morning again for the record. Philip Scarish, Principal Planner with Community Economic Development. Just to give you some background here, because there's some new members here that may, may not be familiar with the Green Swamp and, and our review process for Green Swamp. The Green Swamp is a, is a, is a, is a 322,000 acre region in central Florida designated by the state in 1974 for its legislative, for its statewide environmental resource. Rainwater drains across the surface of this vast area to create the headwaters of the four, four major state rivers, including Withlacoochee, Akewaha, Hillsborough in the Peace, and also percolates through the soil to replenish the Floridian aquifer as a prime source of drinking water for most Floridians. Within the Green Swamp area Critical State Concern, anything that we do, rezonings, site plans, building permits, side, rezonings and site plans for the most part have to be reviewed by the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. It was previously, what was the name of the Chuck? I forgot the, I'm blanking out. DEO was previously...
Department of Community Affairs.
Department of Community Affairs, yeah. Sorry about that. Yeah, apologies. So, so now DEO, they review everything that goes before, gets, gets approved as a site plan within the Green Swamp. So, this is a site plan approval. Normally, this would just be approved administratively by staff and it would, they would just go on to construction. Now that because this is in the Green Swamp area Critical State Concern, our requirements are that, that be approved by the, the local planning agency prior to its transmittal to DEO. And then there's a 45-day appeal process, they review, and then we are able to, to process the site plan approval. So, again, this is, just go back, this is located at 8,000 North Road 33. This is the existing site here. Let me see this. And this general area is where the addition is going. So, this compares the original to what's being proposed. The applicant proposes a 38,343 square foot warehouse expansion to an existing 31,778 square foot warehouse building for a total of 70,121 square feet. The previously approved site plan done in 1999, which is right here, depicts this 60,000 square foot warehouse with 2,475 square foot accessory office uses in the front there. This proposal is considered phase two of the original concept. The difference between this request and the original proposal is an additional, is addition of 7,646 square feet of warehouse space. So, you can see that this is the original that was approved in 1999. Here, again, that was approved as 60. Now, what's being proposed is the same, but they're just adding a little bit more. Again, they're adding a little over 7,000 square feet, 7,646 of, of additional warehouse space. So, this was essentially approved when this came through originally, but since time has elapsed, they have to go back through their permitting and, and because of our land development code criteria, they have to get DEO approval because this is in the Green Swamp. The subject property has an I-2 medium zoning, medium industrial zoning category and a business park, future land use designation. The maximum lot coverage within the business park, future land use designation is, is, or is 50% or 50% FAR or 183,000. And the maximum impervious surface or ISR is 70% or 256,742. At a proposed 19% and 40.5% respectively, the proposed site plan falls below those thresholds for impervious surface ratios and, and FARs. The proposed building addition is expected to generate an additional 249 daily trips and 22 PM peak hour trips. We discussed in the, in the staff report that, that there are improvements in place or going through FDOT approval right now for the intersection of State Road 33 and, and I-4. This would be reconfiguring that, that intersection. The, the right-of-way is, is, is funded. The construction is not funded yet. That will also realign Tom Cow Road. Go back here. They'll also realign Tom Cow Road. I don't know if I, I don't have a good picture of it, but it'll realign Tom Cow Road in this area here coming up, if I'm not...
Yeah, actually, you see where the, where the right-of-way line kind of bumps out and heads north towards the main building, Tom Cow would be realigned to intersect with 33 opposite the Manheim Auto Auction driveway and it will continue down to the southwest and then curve back up on its current alignment.
Right.
So, with the interchange reconstruction, what DOT is doing is they'll be constructing two roundabouts on each side of the, of one, on each side of interchange. And as part of that, they'll have to move Tom Cow north about 300 feet to be able to get the appropriate separation. And so, we've been in close coordination not only with the applicant's team, but also with DOT to make sure that the site design will accommodate that connection at Tom Cow when it is, when it is made and the site will not have a direct access at that point to State Road 33. It'll have access via Tom Cow. So, that's a, that's a big change that'll be coming up.
Yeah, major change.
Hopefully in the next three or four years, but it's still yet unfunded for construction.
Right. So, in a sense, this is really their phase two build out that was originally planned. Again, it's, you know, 7,600 square feet above what, you know, what was approved originally. We do find this consistent with Article Six Resource Protection Standards and the Green Swamp area Critical State Concern. And we do recommend that you forward this to Department of Economic, Department of Economic this to Department of Economic, Department of Economic Opportunity with a favorable recommendation.
Any questions?
I do have a quick question. Since this building is adjacent to the Green Swamp, does it require some additional, like stormwater treatment or additional space? Or how is that handled?
Most of that has been, already been done with the, with that first phase. You see their project limits here, go around an existing wetland and back here. And those really remain essentially the same. I think they just have to, and I'll let the engineer speak, but they have to just basically go through and get that updated with the state agencies. But there's really, the development area hasn't changed from 99 to today. It's going to be the same area. So there's really, there's not any impact, any additional impact that was already approved back in 1999.
Thank you.
It does look like there's, and I'm not sure what's built out today, but it looks like in the original site plan, there's a ditch around the existing parking lot or the proposed parking lot. And in the new plan.
Yeah.
Parking's right up against the.
Yeah, there'll be some parking up against.
Does that swell going away? Is it all going to be piped? What's the?
I'll let the engineer speak to that. I'm not sure that, Justin, can you speak on that?
Good morning. My name is Justin Hinton. I'm with JSK Consulting. The address is 5904 Hillside Heights Drive, Lakeland, Florida, 33812. I believe the question was how we're going to handle the impacts to the existing swales on the property. We are designing the project to accommodate for the impact of the swales and divert the runoff from the impervious areas to the existing stormwater management system. Whether that be through a relocated swell or inlet some pipe, something of that nature. But it'll all be directed to the storm, existing master stormwater management system that's on the north side of the site.
Is that a, is that a, is that a pipe that's shown kind of directly kind of the upper left of the, of the, right there, kind of going back towards the left to the property boundary? Is that part of a pipe system that would go into the retention area that's immediately beyond the building, the building expansion? It looks like there's a structure that's being added there that's not in the, in the 1999 plan.
Yeah, excuse me for one second while I reference my plan here. Yes, there is additional piping along that, that edge of the impervious area leading to the existing pond there, yes. There will also be a couple of flumes installed along the edge of the impervious areas as well as into the existing stormwater management system in order to direct water appropriately.
Chuck, you said future access of this may have to come back to us?
Actually, that's all being handled through. The only change that we would have, and maybe that's something we put in the, put in the, you know, if the plan were to be approved today, is that it's just an acknowledgement that the driveway to 33 is going to actually be replaced with a driveway to a realigned Tom Cow Road that's being done by the Department of Transportation as part of another capital project. So it's nothing that this applicant actually controls. It's something that just affects the connection point to the right of way. It still complies with our land development code access management standards. And so it's, the way the site is designed is going to be fully compliant. It's just how, how the driveway is addressed within the DOT right of way will change.
Just trying to visualize what that looks like in the future. Is the actual driveway ingress egress point going to physically change on the site?
On the, on the development property, it will remain the same.
Okay.
And then when it gets into, just south of the red line there, at the kind of the southern property line.
Okay.
Probably another 10 or 20 feet before you actually get to the northern curb line for Tom Cow Road. Kind of a different, different design approach. It'll look like a jug handle.
Okay.
When all said and done.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, we got it.
I just didn't want to have to approve something here and then approve something in a year or two.
Exactly.
Whatever.
No, it's a good question. Yep, that's it.
Okay, that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, you can see where he's pointing to the realignment of Tom Cow Road. And basically, it's just going to be removal of impervious area where Tom Cow's going to be coming across. So the driveway will then connect to Tom Cow rather than State Road 33.
Okay.
Any other questions? Joe, are you satisfied?
Same.
We have a motion to accept the recommendation of staff.
I move to accept staff's recommendation and move this project on.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed.
Appreciate staff's time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item eight. Flat approval for the JP Properties PC LLC subdivision on 2.04 acres, generally located east of South Pipkin Road and south of Drainfield Road. Owner, JP Properties PC LLC, applicant, JSK Consulting.
Hi, good morning. For the record, Joshua Chaney with Community Economic Development. JSK Consulting on behalf of JP Properties PC LLC has submitted a subdivision plat for the JP Properties, excuse me, LLC subdivision. The proposed replat of Lot Four of the Parkway Corporate Center subdivision consists of two lots on approximately 2.04 acres located east of South Pipkin Road and south of Drainfield Road. Take a look at that. This is a property praiser's office aerial image of the site. You can see it to the west area of South Pipkin Road. And there you can see how the property will be split. Plats are reviewed by the city's subdivision review team for compliance with Article Nine, which are subdivision standards within our land development code. It should also be noted that on May 17, 2022, the Planning and Zoning Board approved a minor modification of the PUD that governs these properties in order to reduce the interior side yard setbacks for an existing office building located at 3930 South Pipkin Road allowing for the construction of a new 10,800 square foot office building on the adjacent property to the south located at 3940 South Pipkin Road. This is subject to ongoing site plan review by staff, and both addresses are located within the boundaries of this replat. And with that, I'll stand for any questions you have. We are recommending approval of this.
What's the point being made by that second paragraph?
We were just informing you that this had been before you recently, just in case there was any questions regarding that.
Okay. Yeah, I wanted to make sure that interior side setback was to this specific parcel, not in the general PUD area, but.
These are only properties subject to that change.
Okay, very good.
Well, property, it soon will be two properties, but the subject property.
Yep.
Any other questions? Is there a movement, is there, is there a motion to approve? The flat is presented.
Motion to approve, as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed.
Item nine. Flat approval for the Lake Wire Development subdivision on 25.03 acres, generally located west of Kathleen Road, Lake Wire Drive, and Sykes Boulevard, and north of West Main Street. Owner, Lake Wire Development Company LLC and the City of Lakeland. Applicant, Venace Hangan Bruce Line, Inc.
Good morning. Again, for the record, Joshua Chaney with Community Economic Development. VHB Incorporated on behalf of the Lake Wire Development Company LLC have submitted a subdivision plat for the Lake Wire Development subdivision. I'll take a look at that here. This is a recent aerial image showing the subject property. And there you can see it located to the west of Lake Wire Drive, to the southeast of George Jenkins Boulevard. The proposed plat is a replat of seven existing parcels into a subdivision, which consists of just two lots and one tract on approximately 25.03 acres, generally located west of Kathleen Road, Lake Wire Drive, and Sykes Boulevard, and north of West Main Street. Plats are reviewed by the city's subdivision review team for compliance with Article Nine of the city's land development code, and staff has recommended approval to the planning zoning board for this request.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the staff's recommendation?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Item 10. Flat approval for Lakes at Laurel Highlands Phase Three B on 19.624 acres, generally located east of Airport Road and north of State Road 570, Polk Parkway. Owner, D.R. Horton, Inc., applicant, Taylor Trough, American Surveying and Mapping, Inc.
For the record, Joshua Chaney with Community Economic Development. American Surveying and Mapping Incorporated on behalf of D.R. Horton Incorporated has submitted a subdivision plat for Lakes at Laurel Highlands Phase Two B. This is the subject property here. You can see the Polk Parkway directly to the south. The proposed plat consists of 14 lots on approximately 19.624 acres, generally located east of Airport Road and north of State Road 570. Again, that's the Polk Parkway. Plats are reviewed by the city's subdivision review team for compliance with Article Nine of the land development code, and we are recommending approval to the planning and zoning board for this plat. And with that, I'll stand for any questions you may have.
I just need to recuse myself from item 10 and 11. I worked on this project in 2007, so I'm just being overly cautious and.
Okay. Are there any questions? We have a motion to accept the staff's recommendation.
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Item 11. Flat approval for, oh, item 11, flat approval for Lakes at Laurel Highlands Phase Three C on 7.015 acres, generally located east of Airport Road and north of State Road 570, Polk Parkway. Owner, D.R. Horton, Inc., applicant, Taylor Trough, American Surveying and Mapping, Inc.
Again, for the record, Joshua Chaney with Community Economic Development. We're in the same location here, although this is a different phase. This is phase three C. It is also American Surveying and Mapping Incorporated on behalf of D.R. Horton have submitted this subdivision plat for Lakes at Laurel Highlands Phase Three C. The proposed plat consists of 29 lots on approximately 7.015 acres, generally located east of Airport Road and north of State Road 570. Plats are reviewed by the city's subdivision review team for compliance with Article Nine of the city's land development code. Here is the subject property. And here is the proposed plat. And staff is recommending approval to the planning and zoning board for this plat. And I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions? Is there a motion to accept the staff's recommendation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 12. Report of City Commission action on planning and zoning board recommendations along with planning and transportation manager's report.
All right. I think we're going to get done much earlier than last month and certainly next month. Just a heads up.
Telling us to block out a big chunk of our calendar.
I suspect so. But there's been a number of, yesterday was a pretty packed agenda, and the city commission ended up approving the Swindell Road, the business park annexation, land use and zoning there just immediately east of Wildvine, north of the interstate. They approved the Morgan Creek Track D proposal for five lots. The Ledger Site was approved as well as the Old Streets Apartments, the 96 units there just east of Oregon Avenue. And then they approved the transmittal of the Southwest City Park Site to the Department of Economic Opportunity for review. That will come back for formal adoption as well as the zoning, the conditional use in the context district. So that was a pretty busy, pretty busy meeting yesterday. And then the August 1st meeting, they approved the church expansion on Papel Drive that was approved by the planning and zoning board a couple of months ago. And then we've had a couple of continuances related to the Citrus Mutual Site, the post parking across the street. The applicant's requested a couple of continuances, and so that is yet to be heard by the city commission, but we expect that that will come back on September 6. In terms of upcoming items, let me jump over here. Of course, the continuances that we had today will come back. Wedgewood, Parkway, Furniture Road, and Yates Road Town Park. So those, those will be coming back for final decision. Let's see, you've got a few.
Are they going to be final decision, or are they going to go back to the hearing stage and then?
Probably, Wedgewood will certainly come back to a hearing because of the scale of the changes. I suspect we'll also be doing that with Yates, Yates Town Park as well because the applicant has really done, I believe, a very good job of addressing the neighborhood and the board's comments from the public hearing. So I would expect that that would have a hearing component as well. The Parkway Apartments next to Lockheed Martin, the big issue there was the, was access off the Parkway Furniture Road. The developer is very close to reaching an agreement with Lockheed Martin for a shared driveway connection. And so that will pretty much be the major change. So I don't see the need for that to go back through a hearing. So, I mean, there's been a lot of progress on these items.
Yeah, but the goal is, I think, is to wrap up all three of them. So we will have an actual staff recommendation for all three.
Oh, yeah.
So have the hearing, but also make the final decision.
Exactly. And then the next, in terms of hearing, it'll be a conditional use for a auto sales at 1233 West Memorial Boulevard. It'd be conditional use for used motor vehicle sales and accessory motor vehicle service and repair on approximately 1.18 acres at that location. So it's right there near Marion Drive, just west of the, north side of Memorial Boulevard, just west of the CSX Kathleen Road Overpass. We also have a zoning request for the old District Court of Appeals site on Memorial Boulevard east of Ingram Avenue. Pretty much what we're looking at here is going from O2 to C4. So it'd be more of a, more of a commercial type, type development. And of course, the associated changes to the context district. The land use, we would be looking to go from public institutional to community activity center. So there's going to be quite a bit associated with that one going forward. And then there would be a requested change to the master sign plan for Lakeland Central Park, which is the 724 acre business park west of Airport Road and north of the Polk Parkway. So those will be coming back to the board at the next meeting on September 20.
Any questions, Joe? Anything from the audience? That being said, I believe we are adjourned.
Thank you all very much for your time and service today.
Thank you.